Good afternoon. Uh, I'd like to call to order the March two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission. We'd like to have a first up is approval of the agenda, but we'd like to note as of this time and if anyone's in the audience. Number three on the agenda, the quasi judicial hearing for the PUD case one dash two oh two five. Paul, they've asked for continuance?
Uh, that's correct. This is the U-Haul case, so they have asked for continuance. We're not sure if it will be next month in April or May, but.
Alright, so the agenda will be amended. There will be no number three. And we'll skip over that. So I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Please call roll.
Mr. Brewer.
In favor?
Uh, Ms. DeFosse?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. The second item is the approval of the minutes. We have two months, uh, December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. As members of the board read the agenda. Okay, motion to approve the December sixteenth minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes as presented.
Second.
Call roll.
Mr. Brewer?
Yes.
Ms. DeFosse?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. And then also now for the January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five approval of the minutes, motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five meetings minutes as presented.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Mr. Brewer?
Yes.
Ms. DeFosse?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. At this time, we'll go to agenda item four, which is the quasi judicial hearing for major adjustment request for the planned unit development. Case one dash two thousand sixteen, PUD for three, four thousand two hundred and seventy Round Bottom Road, uh, filed by Christopher Milner. Staff, would you like to give the report?
Ms. Donovan was going to read some of the instructions.
I'm sorry, you're correct. Uh, with PUD hearings, we have to ask, uh, read a short script, and then we'll ask anyone who's going to be speaking that's not a lawyer to stand up and we will swear you in.
First, I'll outline the procedures the commission will follow in hearing and deciding this matter. Under the zoning resolution, our decision is subject to appeal to the Board of Township Trustees and then to the Court of Common Pleas. As a result, we must employ different procedures from other cases that are typically presented to the zoning commission. Because this is a quasi judicial proceeding, the commission will only receive evidence as to whether the application meets or does not meet the standards and criteria in the zoning resolution. We do not want to hear opinions, just facts relating to the compliance with these standards and criteria. As a result, all persons presenting testimony before the commission, whether for or against the applicant's position, may only do so after being sworn in. All witnesses will be subject to cross-examination. The staff will present a summary of the application. The applicant will then present its case. The board members may ask questions of the staff and anyone who speaks on behalf of the applicant. If an attorney is present the case, presents the case for the applicant, the attorney is not sworn in and is not considered to be a witness. As a result, the attorney's statements are not considered as evidence. Evidence only comes in through witnesses who testify before the commission after being sworn in. The burden is on the applicant to present evidence that the application satisfies the standards and criteria for approval. After the applicant presents its case through its witnesses, all persons in the audience supporting the application will be permitted to testify one at a time after being recognized by the chair. When all persons supporting the application are finished, those opposed to the application will then be permitted to testify after being recognized by the chair. If anyone in opposition is represented by an attorney, that party will go first, followed by any members of the audience. As stated previously, all persons wishing to testify, whether for or against the application, may only do so after being sworn in. When testifying, each person from the audience must come forward to the podium after being recognized, speak into the microphone and state their name, address, and any affiliation to the case. All persons testifying will be limited to four minutes unless a commission member requests that they be given additional time. All testimony is directed to the commission only. No comments or questions are to be directed to the applicant or anyone else in the audience. The commission will only hear new, non-repetitive evidence or questions. Should someone wish to show support of previous testimony, they may do so by following the testimony procedures and stating their support of previous testimony. Now with all persons who may give testimony this evening, please stand, raise your right hand, and swear or affirm.
So just confirming I'm the turn for the applicant, so I'm not gonna swear, right?
Yep. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Let me back, um, give our staff, staff summary, please.
Thank you. This is case one, two thousand sixteen, PUD. It is a major adjustment. The applicant is Christopher Milner, Associate of KMK Law on behalf of BEE Properties, Inc., who is a property owner. It's located at forty-two seventy Round Bottom Road, and the zoning there is ID PUD, which is industrial development, planned unit development. So the request is, um, to keep two portable structures. Uh, one is approximately sixty-five hundred square feet, and the other is approximately, um, twenty-eight hundred square feet. These were installed without permits, and we'll get through the history here. So these were installed last year. Um, the, this larger one was installed somewhere around April, May of two thousand twenty-four, and then the other one was installed somewhere around August of two thousand twenty-four. The applicant, the zoning history here, the applicant purchased the property in May of two thousand thirteen. In the two thousand sixteen, the applicant presented a PUD application before the zoning commission and was approved, um, for variance for parking lot and also for, uh, the business of Round Bottom Rentals. It's a rental, um, business owned by Evans Landscaping. The decision was approved by the zoning commission. However, it was ultimately appealed by the applicant on the basis of the requirement for a sidewalk. This appeal was later withdrawn, um, and the PUD went into effect and the business went into effect. Regarding the two structures before you tonight, a violation letter was sent to the applicant on August the seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and this was for the larger structure constructed without permits. During an inspection in November eighth, uh, two thousand twenty-four, an additional structure, uh, was noticed on site. Um, so therefore, we did have a joint meeting with the township, the applicant's attorneys, the Hamilton County Building Inspectors, and township staff. This was conducted on November the twentieth. This was just to clarify whether a building permit was needed and if these two structures were, the applicant had classified them as transportable, portable structures. Um, and the building inspectors confirmed that they were permanent structures and did require a building permit. So therefore, an updated site plan was submitted via email November the eighteenth. Um, and this was brought to the zoning commission in December. With the revised application, the impervious surface was also identified as eighty percent. So on December the sixteenth, uh, the zoning commission heard the case. At that time, we had three zoning commission members and two voted to approve, uh, the modification and one voted against, so therefore, the motion did not pass. The applicant appealed this decision to the Board of Township Trustees in February of this year, two thousand twenty-five, and the board did not hear the appeal, but remanded the case back to the zoning commission for full board. So that's how we came full circle where we are tonight. So this is a property map of the site in question, Round Bottom Road. There is one, um, this was taken from cages, so it does not show the two, um, structures that are the request for tonight. This is the topography map of the site in question. It's fairly, fairly, uh, flat. It does slope up slowly toward the south, gradually, I should say. This is an aerial of the site in question. This is the building that is used for the rental operation. There is a small parking lot up front. This was given a variance during the first PUD hearing. And this is the location of the new structure, as well as this area up here. This is the location of the new structure. This is the surrounding zoning, which is all ID, uh, industrial development. Evans Landscaping Headquarters is across the street, across Round Bottom Road. We have property owned by Martin Marietta to the east and to the south. This is Evans Parking Lot for his headquarters business. Um, there is a small strip of single-family residence to the south of, of Broadwell. This is the application. So these are the elevation drawings of the building itself. They are open-air structures. You can see from the side. And this is the smaller one. This is the site plan that was submitted with the application, identifying the location and the setbacks of the two structures. Again, the smaller one is up front, closer to the roadway, although it does meet the front yard setback to Round Bottom Road. And this is the larger structure that sits back a little bit farther, and again, it also meets setbacks, uh, for the ID zoning district. This was the map showing the impervious surface, which is around eighty percent. These are the site photos we took back on our site visit on November, um, the eighth, except for this one. This was a recent one showing our, our posting of the sign. This is the larger structure. It is, um, the purpose of these two structures was to shelter equipment that is being stored on the site. Um, they are both open-air structures, up open on, on two sides, closed on two sides. Um, there is gravel underneath, uh, both of these, but there is pavement around this, the, the structures. Just different vantage points of the two different structures. This shows you how they're anchored to the ground. This is the, shows you the back one that they did have to cut out some of the parking lot to level it out. So with the PUD modification, we look at zoning resolution compliance, and as stated before, these two, um, do meet the setbacks for the ID zoning district. There was no additional lighting or landscaping that was proposed with these two structures. And at the time, there was no ISR submitted, um, but i- it is eighty percent with the revised plans. We also look at our applicable adopted plans, the one first being the Anderson Township Comprehensive Plan. Staff was of the opinion that it was consistent with the economic vitality and, and land use and development chapters of the comprehensive plan. And overall, these do, um, fit in with an industrial area. They are consistent with construction in an industrial area, so staff was supportive of the application. Um, there were some conditions that were recommended last year. One was that building permits shall be obtained for all structures. Number two, if the two structures are relocated on site, this is considered a minor adjustment and could be approved by staff, um, but the application needs to be made and can be approved administratively. If the new, if any new structures are proposed beyond these two, um, then that would require a review by our zoning commission. So that was condition number three. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thanks, Paul. At this time, I open it up and, uh, to members of the commission to ask questions of staff. I'll start with Commissioner Gothard.
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Ward, any questions?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner DeFosse? Did I say that correctly?
You did. Yeah, no questions.
Uh, Commissioner Brewer?
No questions.
Oh, I've got questions.
Okay.
Um, you, you had said that, uh, the township or the applicant thought they were temporary structures. The Hamilton County said they were permanent. Where's the demarcation that makes it temporary versus permanent?
These are permanent structures. The only.
What makes them permanent versus temporary?
The size for one, uh, makes them a permanent structure. They are over two hundred square feet, so they were required to have a building permit.
So two hundred square feet, they?
That's for any accessory structure. There are some exceptions for temporary tents, but that's of a temporary building material. So like in a vent tent, there are some exceptions for that, but beyond that, there really is no qualification for temporary structure.
Okay, and, uh, as far as with no foundation and no footer, I'm not an engineer. Are there any safety issues with high winds or?
Well, that needs to be reviewed by the building department through their building permit application.
Okay. And then the last question, would you have the ISR now at eighty percent?
Correct.
What is, how much is that over?
It's just.
I know it kicks in the PUD.
It kicks in the PUD. It's slightly above what they had before, but the, um, structures are really covering over existing parking areas and storage areas that were already either had gravel or pavement, so it didn't, right.
Great. At this time, I'd like for the applicant, uh, is it Mr. Milner?
Actually, uh, my name is Dan Utte. I'm a partner at KMK. Mr. Milner is one of my colleagues.
Can you spell your name for?
Uh, Dan Utte, U-T-T, uh, with the Keating Methane and Clay Camp law firm, One East Fourth Street, Cincinnati, four five two zero two.
Great.
Good evening.
Would you like to add anything to staff's?
No, this, uh, this case has had quite a history. We appeared before the zoning commission back in November a- after working through, uh, with staff their concerns about the temporary structures. Also had some interplay with the building department because there was a difference of opinion on whether they were temporary or permanent structures. We understand the township's position and Hamilton County's position. We're actually applying for building permits as we speak, subject to resolution before the zoning commission for the, uh, amendment to the PUD plan. So we, we acquiesce in that determination and are applying for the building permits and have an engineer that certified the plans and will probably have to address anchoring with Hamilton County in terms of, uh, their requirements for the structure.
So having gone through this going forward, you will, you will know that any additional buildings would need to go through?
Correct. So we, we understand the position of Hamilton County. We actually have a couple of other portable structures that we're in the process of working with the township in Hamilton County to get those permitted on other properties.
Okay.
They're fairly commonly used building and industrial properties, commercial properties. Uh, they were designed to be, uh, movable from the standpoint they're on skids. They could be slow, uh, moved around on the site to be used at the spot on the site that were, uh, where they were needed to protect equipment. So the purpose of these two structures on Round Bottom Road for Round Bottom Rental is to protect the equipment that they rent and store on site and actually to make the site look more aesthetically pleasing when you drive by.
Are you at capacity with these two structures for storage or is there?
Um, we have, we have, as part of the PUD plan is approved today. We have outside storage as well. We're just trying to minimize that. Um, I mean, this gives us the stories that we need for the time being. We know that if we have to ask for approval for another, uh, structure, it's going to require another amendment to the plan.
Okay.
Versus moving the existing structures. So we appreciate the conditions and we, we want to resolve it and be in compliance and be able to operate our business and utilize the, the structures because we think they're pretty valuable.
Right.
We think it looks a lot better, and it's gen, it's consistent with the land use plan in the area. It's consistent with the industrial, uh, y- use district, and I can run through the, the PUD amendment requirements if you'd like, but I think, uh, staff has done a pretty good job doing that for us.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty straightforward at this point.
Yeah.
Uh, at this time, any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Start with Commissioner, uh, Brewer.
Lou, um, how exactly do you move a six thousand square foot building?
Uh, you can use a heavy piece of equipment, a front-end loader, to drag it on the ground because it's on a steel skid that you could actually move it on the gravel of the parking lot.
Okay. And another question I have is, when was the second structure installed?
So I think staff initially, uh, inspected in August of two thousand twenty-four. There was one structure, then we had a, uh, a site meeting and I think it was in October, November. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but you discovered it between the time of the initial violation letter in August and when we met on site with Hamilton County.
So you can't say for sure in August when it was installed?
It was after August, definitely, because he, he inspected the site.
So it was after the file, first violation letter was received that the second structure began construction on? That's my question.
It was, it was fabricated and was taken across the street at Evans Landscaping and put on Round Bottom Rental property.
Okay. Um, what was I gonna say? I guess, I guess my big hangup on this is why it was thought that a six thousand square foot structure could be built without a building permit and talking to the township beforehand.
Evans had discussions with Hamilton County with one of the, uh, building department inspectors, and there was a difference of opinion. We actually had a meeting with the supervisor at Hamilton County on site when he made it pretty definitive that he felt and produced the evidence that it was a structure that required a permit.
Okay.
So that's why we're applying for a permit.
Okay.
After getting the zoning certificate, if you guys approve that request or the amendment to the PUD, we have another case where it's a zoning certificate to get the approval for a temporary structure that's going to be permitted.
That's all my questions.
Okay, Commissioner Fosse?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
I do not have any questions.
Commissioner Gothard?
So the other structures that you mentioned, those are not on this subject property?
Correct.
And they're not part of this approval process in your eyes or the owner's eyes, correct?
They're definitely not on this property. There's one on Mount Cornwall gravel that we've, uh, talked to Paul about and staff, and there's two on, two or three on the Evans Landscaping principal property that we're also going to be submitting a building, a zoning certificate request and building permit application.
So those structures currently exist?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
I, I have no more, no questions. I sort of interjected, uh, when you were talking, so.
No, that's perfectly fine.
At this time?
I appreciate your time and attention. This has, uh, been a process for you, a process for us. We want to get it resolved, move forward, and proactively, uh, get zoning certificates and approvals before we install structures like these.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
At this time, I will close the public, since seeing no one else, uh, speaking in favor or against. Did we receive any correspondence?
No, we didn't.
Okay. At this time, I will close the public discussion and open up the discussion among the commissioners, and we will, you know, entertain a motion to either approve or deny.
Well, I mean, I, I think, you know, it does meet the general standards for PUD plan approval. Um, unfortunately, it's after the fact. It seems like this is a, a continuing after-the-fact sort of request from this shared property owner. Um, you know, but since it meets the PUD plan approval, you know, we have to sort of go by that and hope that in the future, we're not always asked for forgiveness. We're asked for approval before these things happen. Um, because, you know, it may sway sort of my opinion on giving approvals in the future, quite frankly. You know, if, if we approve today. Um, you know, I know some people think just ask for forgiveness and that's okay, you know. Zoning codes are in place for a reason. It's a, a way to, you know, apply standards across the board that have been established by the township. Um, you know, and applying those after the factor is really, really difficult. Uh, and we've had a lot of cases lately that have been that way. But, you know, um, looking at the PUD, looking at the previous approval motion and staff recommendations, you know, uh, again, I think we look at that and apply that for tonight's case. So that's all my comments.
Good points. Anyone else?
I agree with everything you said and, um, based off what staff has said and what was noted in the December minutes. I concur with all of your comments.
Commissioner Brewer?
Uh, in total agreement, I think something else has be said is that these are also to put all businesses on fair standing grounds. Everyone has to go through the same process. Everyone has to get the same type of approvals, and it shouldn't allow companies that have the money to pay lawyers to be here for them and have the money to flaunt these, to get away with it. Uh, but I totally agree with, um, what you said about going forward with this, but if it continues to be a problem, that would a hundred percent sway things going forward.
Commissioner Ward?
And following the process should be easier and more efficient for everyone involved. So yes, I, I am hoping that everyone understands the process now and, um, we could follow that in the future.
Okay, and, you know, um, Commissioner Gothard was, you hit it right on the nose. When I read the meeting notes, um, I have great respect for Commissioner McBride and yourself, having read or heard the case in December. It was approved. However, the math didn't work out that there wasn't three yay votes. I do think it was a very bold move to put a second structure, um, after the violation, and I a hundred percent agree. If there's a serial, uh, applicant that continually just does, does what he or she wants, that's, um, that, that's not going to bode well for the next time. So asking the question that any future structures will be going through the process, um, I accept that on, on your word. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to either approve or deny.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve case one dash two thousand sixteen, PUD major adjustment for the property of forty-two seventy Round Bottom Road for the property known as Round Bottom Rental, based on staff's findings, subject to the following conditions. No additional structure, structures regardless of temporary or permanent shall be erected on the property without obtaining permit and of complying to the zoning resolution prior to the actual installation of said structures. That the two structures considered tonight remain on, as shown on the site plan submitted, with no movement, but however, if planned, they are to be, planned to be moved, that they would require a minor modification with staff review, again, prior to the actual moving of said structures. And that even applies to anything required, uh, for the building permit application requirements. That the township be able to inspect the, and the site and property for any violations that, and that said violations be addressed in a reasonable time to comply with the zoning resolution. That a building permits for each structure currently existing be obtained from Hamilton County. And if new structures are proposed, a major adjustment application shall be submitted to the zoning commission for review prior to the actual erection or construction of said structures.
Okay. Sorry, do you have it? Okay. Do we have a second for that motion?
I second the motion.
Second motion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brewer?
Yes.
Ms. DeFosse?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes. Thank you. You're approved?
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Uh, the last item on the agenda is the election of officers. Um, Paul, do you want to give, my first question is, um, when is my term up?
I, we can look at that and have that discussion if you.
But throughout this year for, um, I'm through twenty twenty-five.
No, uh, yes, but in, Ms. Ward is going.
Ben's, when was?
So actually, her term would expire this year.
So we're voting for twenty twenty-five?
Yes, we're voting for twenty twenty-five.
So what this is, we invite, we vote for a chair, which I am right now, and a vice chair, which Mr. Gothard is right now, for the remainder of this year, and then we do the same thing starting in twenty twenty-six with a new slate of, might be new commissioners, new alternates. So I don't feel comfortable voting for people who aren't here because I think that's a, a bad, bad idea as I am here today because I missed a meeting last year.
I, I thought it was an excellent idea last year, Mr. Lewis.
So at, at this time, I would, um, I'm not running for it, but I, I will stay a chair or if someone, yourself. Yeah, I, I don't believe. Could be an alternate. Correct? I'll tell you one of those three, or Anne or Brian. Those are two other full-time members who are not here.
They're here till the end of twenty twenty-six.
Are you? Alright, so do you want to assume the chair back?
You know, if the board so sees it, I would accept the chair back.
Do you want it?
Well, I mean, you know, I, I think it's either that or next, next month, we might be in the same position.
I'm making a, a motion to prove, uh, Commissioner Gothard to be the chair for the year twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Call roll.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ward, did you second?
I did second, yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Brewer?
Yes.
Ms. DeFosse?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Abstain.
And Mr. Lewis?
Yes. At this time, I'd accept the nomination for vice chair for twenty twenty-five.
You know, I know he's not here, but I would, um, nominate Mr. Elif for vice chair for twenty twenty-five, even though he's not here.
He, uh, have you had any conversations with him and he's?
No, I've not.
Okay. When is his?
I know he'd stand up for the camp township, though.
Okay, so he's through this year at least two, then?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we have a motion for, it's Fisher Bryant Elif. Uh, he's been on the commission several years. Um, I believe he has been.
He's been chair.
He's been chair one year, so. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Brewer?
Yes.
Ms. DeFosse?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay. Great. I'd like to welcome the new alternates, welcome the new member. I would like to, at some point, if we have longer meetings, that we make a motion, we all come together and we ask for beverages and snacks for the fifth, sixth year in a row I've asked it. Now, at this time, motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Roll, please.
Mr. Brewer?
Yes.
Ms. DeFosse?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes.
Or Mr. Lewis?
Yes.